Call our meeting to order. It's good to see everyone this evening. It is Monday, August the twentieth, and we are in our regular city council meeting, although the, our agenda's workshop is really neat. So we are now called to order, and I would like to introduce Pastor Teal Pratt with the Communion Christian Center. Pastor Pratt, that's kind of a time quizz, where Pastor Pratt has agreed to come and give us our invocation, and then lead us in our pledge allegiance. So Pastor, if you want to come up here to, to the front, that would be great. And thank you again for coming tonight and leading us in prayer in our pledge.
Thank you, ma'am. Honored mayor, pleasure, ma'am. City council, everybody in your respective place. We appreciate God for giving us an opportunity to be here today. I want to open up by quoting a verse of scripture from the Bible. First John, chapter four, verse seven, says, "Beloved, let us love one another, for love is of God; and everyone that love it is born of God and knoweth God." Certainly, this world would be a better place if we all loved. We could get along a lot better, we could get a lot more accomplished, if we all loved. So that's our encouragement for you on this evening. Let us love one another. And that doesn't qualify. That simply says one another. So if we do that, we're in line with scripture. Bow your heads, please. Dear God, we thank you for this day for light, health, and strength. We appreciate you for allowing us to come in this time of business. For we recognize that you said in your word that we should not be slothful even in business. Bless this mayor, bless this council, bless all that are in attend- in attendance with the wisdom that they need to accomplish your business. And pray that you would give us hearts of cooperation and a spirit of love and unity, that it would flow throughout these chambers, and everything would be done decently and in order. And we are going to give you the praise, the glory, and the honor in advance for all this business being accomplished and being done to your expectations. And for the betterment of our city. Continue to bless our city, every participant, every officer, every constituent. For this, we give you praise, we give glory, and we give you honor. We bless you now in the name of the matchless one, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
You stand and face the flag. Let us sing in unison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, you have in front of you a copy of the agenda that Jessica's emailed out to us. And if everything looks in order, I will take a motion to approve the agenda or to make any changes. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, and we have three sets of minutes from July the sixteenth, July the twenty-sixth, and August the sixth. We can take those individually, or I can take a motion to approve all of them if you are satisfied with those that were submitted.
Salute.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this point on our agenda, we have a swearing in, or one of our new board members does. There's George, I thought I saw you come in. Jessica, if you got his paperwork there, okay. And I will come down the front. And George, if you'll meet me at the lectern here. All right, and we appreciate very much you volunteering to serve on our tree board. The work that you'll be doing there is, is very important to the community, and you've got some great board members that you'll be working with, so we appreciate very much your volunteering. I'm going to read the oath of office, and then at the end, if you will simply say aye or I swear on it. Okay? So your oath of office is that you, George Valitis, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Tipton Tree Board of this city, and that you will support and defend the charter of the city of Tipton, as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America; that you shall attend all meetings of the body to which you have been appointed unless providentially hindered; that you shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the city council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto; and lest disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, you shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which you have been appointed; and that you shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia; and that you shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the city of Tipton. Do you affirm?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure.
We appreciate that. And I'm going to sign this, and then Jessica will sign it. And if you want to sign, we'll be done. And you are now officially a member of the Tipton Tree Board. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Very much.
We appreciate all of the citizens of our community who volunteer to serve on the various boards. It, it really makes a big impact, and it makes our city a better, stronger city. At this time, we have citizen input, and Jessica, I believe we do have someone who has signed in that would like to speak. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, if you'd like to come up to the lectern here, and if you will, just share with us your name and your address, and then the floor is yours.
All right. First of all, thank y'all for allowing me to come up in and present my problem to y'all. Well, what it is, my name is Kenneth Johnson. I stay at seven eleven Leach Lane here in Tipton. I've been there about twenty-two years now at that same location. And what my problem is, is that my water meter is on the other side of the street that I live on, Poplar Street. And I stay at Leach Lane, and which, you know, now I'm having a problem with leaks on that private property that, that my water meter's coming through. I can't get over there to fix it. And they got dogs over there now, and they done dug a hole in one line one time. And now they got a big up round pool sitting on direct on top of the line, so I can't get over there and fix it if I really wanted to. And I asked the city, and the city told me I had to pay six hundred dollars to get a three-quarter inch line running from bedroom down to my property. But I'm trying to ask the city where they, see what they can do to help me with that, because I'm going to fix it, me and my wife both are disabled. And I want to see what can y'all do to, to help me with the problem that I have.
Okay. Do you remember who you spoke with? Was it?
It was somebody down there at the city.
At the water department, maybe?
I'm thinking so, and they, they called and told me that the run of three-quarters line would be six hundred dollars.
Okay, all right. Is that something that we can look into, Pete?
Yeah, we, we sure, we sure can. Jessica gave me the note, and I asked Adam and Jeff to take a look at the scenario. So we, I think we, we know about this, and I don't know the details, but I'd be glad to, to work this out and talk, talk about specifics.
Okay. Can you leave your phone number, Mr. Johnson, with Jessica, so that we can call you and make arrangements to talk with you about what they?
Yes, ma'am.
I do, I do have it.
Okay. Okay, good.
We have to just, we've got to do some measuring and studying of the water lines to see actually if there's an issue. Obviously, we want to make sure that there's no leaks on his side, but we will certainly look into that.
Okay, all right. Well, just listen out. They will definitely be in touch.
I shall thank y'all again.
Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate you sharing that information with us.
Ma'am, I've been over there and looked at that, and there is a great concern about this. And I, I told Mr. Johnson that he, that he come and address the council, that we would do so- do something to help him. Because right now, he's just in a bind.
Sure, exactly.
It's in a, it's in a bind, and I, I'd ask Adam Carr to come over and look at it to look, to see what could we do about this problem. But I'm glad you come, Mr. Johnson, and thank you, and we are going to get on top of it.
I shall thank y'all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Okay. All right, was there any other one else, Jessica, that signed in that wanted to speak? All right, we are now in the old business section of our agenda, and I'll remind you that all of the items that are on our agenda are items that we did discuss in our workshop at the beginning of the month. There are two items that are kind of tied together under old business. It's the ordinance requesting the rezoning of two parcels of property, one at twenty-two oh three North Highway forty-one, and one at twenty-two oh one North Highway forty-one to be rezoned from neighborhood commercial to general business. That had previously been tabled, so if anyone would like to make a motion to either approve or not approve or take any action on these two parcels, I'll take that at this time.
Do we have to take them off the table, or do we, if we just don't take any action, and they go away, we could?
Well, generally, when you tabled them last time, probably would have been a motion to postpone to a specific date. But somebody could make another motion. If you want to address this issue somewhere down the road, you can postpone it indefinitely, which sounds like to me maybe that might be the appropriate thing to do at this point. And then you can take it back up whenever you want to, if you want to.
But if we don't do anything, will they, can we just not do anything, and they go away? Or do we have to re-table them?
We just take no actions?
If there's no motion, then there's no action. It basically results in the same thing as postponing it to a indefinite time. See the way you want to go.
Okay. All right, I don't hear a motion to any effect, so we will move forward. The next, three items are part of our consent agenda, and these are all items that we can take together, or we can take those independently. Item number three is the resolution of ending the city's purchasing policy. Item number four is an approval of the amendment, number four, to the agreement with ESG Operations. And then item number five is a resolution for a new alcohol beverage license for Terminal South. Again, these were items that we discussed at our workshop. I will take a motion regarding those items.
I believe we approve all three together.
Okay, all right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we have a couple of items of new business. One is the ordinance rezoning four point three-nine acres located on North Murray Avenue from suburban agricultural to single-family residential. And we did have a public hearing at our last meeting and discussed that at our workshop. These items will need to take independently or separately, so if there is a motion regarding that, I'll take that now.
I believe we approve that result.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that rezoning? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item is a resolution providing for a new alcohol beverage license.
Let me just, I, I appreciate, I want to take Jason Hendricks at City Ranks Row showing, you know, and just moving forward and putting, you know, building more properties into.
Yes.
We, we want more houses, we want more property, and in fact, they're going to step out there and do it. It shows, we just appreciate it, you know. You're confident in the city, and we, we thank you.
Thank you for offering.
Good point. Thank you for that. Thank you very much. And I think all five of us would say, "Here, here, absolutely." Our next item, item number seven, is the resolution providing for a new alcohol beverage license for Little Pantry located at thirteen oh two South Central, and that application is in our packets if you need to review that. I will take a motion to address Little Pantry.
Mayor, this is a new application that came in after the workshop.
Okay.
The applicant is leasing the property, and it's a husband and wife.
Okay.
And both their names are, I believe, Rh- Rhana, I think, is how you pronounce it.
Okay.
His staff is recommending a present.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will take a motion concerning the Little Pantry beverage license.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number eight is the resolution adopting the city of Tipton Workplace Wellness Policy. Denise, you want to share that information with us?
Good evening, mayor and council. So I have in front of me the workplace wellness policy. And I want to tell you that at the heart of the policy, the city of Tipton is looking to encourage our staff to really grow their personal health, and that responsibility comes on our part in assisting through various activities, whether it be lifestyle management, physical activities, nutrition, and disease management and prevention. Last year, the city did receive a five thousand dollar grant from a wellness scene point. However, there was one criteria that was not met, and that was establishing a wellness policy. And so that's why I'm here today, is to establish this policy so that we can proceed. I have submitted granting information for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, but this item here is, is required in order to meet all criteria.
Okay. Awesome idea. Any, any comments, questions for Denise? All right. Since this is a resolution, I will need a motion to, to approve that resolution.
Salute.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, the carries. Thank you, Denise. Thank you for all your work and coordinating that and putting that together. That's very important. Thank you. All right, we are at the point of our agenda now, where our city manager will give his report and update. Pete, I'm turning over to you.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Council, I too want to say thanks to Denise and the Wellness Committee. We put together, made up of seven city employees, really good stuff that they're doing and making a difference. So we're going to be applying for the grant again this year. But I'm proud to present, and I think I passed this out last week, we were just informed that the city's healthcare benefits, we've been in it a year and a half now, and it was unexpected what was going to happen for this coming year, but we were notified that our premiums will not change for two thousand nineteen for all employees. So it's a great news. It is testimony that it's working, and it's just huge for us that we could deliver these things again with our employees, just benefits of healthcare, benefits of wellness, and taking care of the employees and their families to a new level. And it's just, it's just really, really proud for us to be able to bring that to you. That's all I have.
Okay, all right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is our board report, and as you know, we have several vacancies at this point in time. But the good news is, we've had several people that have applied for positions with the various boards that we have. And that is in your packet on page fifty-nine, and the information that Jessica emailed out to us earlier, or at the end of last week. And we can, if you'd like, we can take these boards one at a time, however, however the council.
Jesus, too, Lord.
Yeah, I think we have to.
Okay. All right, the first one is the Historic Preservation Commission. And we do have an applicant, we actually have two applicants for the Historic Preservation Commission. So if anyone would like to make a motion at this point in time, I will take that now.
I believe that we appoint Kristen Morrison to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, our next item is the Tipton Housing Authority. And the housing authority actually can be appointed by the mayor, but I think that it's very important that we collectively, as a council, appoint these members to the housing authority. So we have current members that are seeking reappointment, and then we also have several folks who have volunteered to serve on this board. So at this point in time, I will take a motion to the effect of the housing authority board appointments.
May I like to make a recommendation for Megan Campbell to be appointed to the Tipton Housing Authority?
Okay, all right. So we have a motion for Megan. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please?
She, she lives in my district, correct? She lives in, she lives in the city.
She is a city resident.
She does a lot, she does a lot of outreach, and we just need to be clear, we need to be.
Right. And thank you for bringing that up. That's, that's a good point, yes, yes. All right, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Megan Campbell to the position on the Tipton Housing Authority. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we have another position that is available on the housing authority. Dr. Homer Day is currently the, the chair of the housing authority, and has done a very good job, and has, does wish to seek reappointment. So if anyone would like to make that motion.
Mayor, I want you to get Dr. Day reappointed.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Jack. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we also have, on the housing authority board, there is a position for a resident of the housing, one of the housing authority properties. And we do have an applicant in Dennis Whitehead, who lives at three oh seven Maple Street. He is a resident of the housing authority and has submitted his application to be appointed to that board. Would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
Salute.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that has our Historic Preservation Commission filled, that has our housing authority filled. We also have a vacancy on the Tipton Planning and Zoning Board, and we do have two applicants that have submitted their names for that particular board. So if anyone would like to make a motion, we'll take that now.
Second. Solomon Dixon. Solomon Dixon.
Solomon Dixon Jr.
Salute.
Okay, all right, so appointing, making the motion to appoint Solomon Nixon Jr., okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We also have a vacancy on the Tipton Zoning Board of Appeals. Jessica, I don't know, would it be appropriate to call any of these other applicants to see if they might be interested in serving on that board? Or if anyone would like to get their application in, we can certainly take that and consider that at our, at our next meeting. But that does fill several of our board, board spots, so, so that's really, really good. And you'll be notifying them and bring them in and square them in, just like we did with Mr. Valitis today.
And Susan Marine, I plan to get something out of her.
Yeah, she might be interested.
I ain't going to appeal.
Okay. And also in our packet, Jessica gave us a listing of all the boards, and then the various terms, and how many members serve those boards. So if you have any questions about that, Jessica, I know we'll be glad to answer them.
Do we have any vacancies on the tree board?
On the tree board? I think with appointing George Valitis, that filled that board, is that correct?
Yeah, and somebody else, Lori Felton's wife, Jimmy Felton.
Yeah, Lori.
Jimmy, Jimmy Felton.
So Lori doesn't want to be?
Well, she was on the tree board, but she wants to now be involved and keep Tipton beautiful.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, any, any questions concerning the board report, any other information that we need to review? All right, we're moving through things quickly. The last item on our agenda is our council comments, and it's just a time for you to share any information or concerns or ideas, whatever you would like to share. Frank, I want to start at your end and share any comments.
At our last meeting, we, we discussed some issues with the voting bar. Pete, I'd like to get a report from you, and I know that you were trying to have a meeting with Richard Gold and find out where he stands with some of these things.
I was going to see you, Councilor Terrell, after the meeting, but I'm scheduled to meet with Richard tomorrow at three o'clock. So I should have some updates for you at that time, and then we could schedule our committee meeting thereafter.
Yeah, yeah, but the committee has not yet met, but we want to, Pete needs to meet with Richard first and discuss.
Okay, perfect, okay, very good. Councilman Terrell?
Well, I'm good with, Frank, we, we want to talk with people, that people can, and get this thing done. Because we've been kicking this can down the road for a little while, and it's time to pick it up, up, up. And put it in the trash or whatever, but it's time.
No, not intended.
Yeah, yeah. It, it's time to get rid of this thing. It's been going on too long. Let's get it solved, not to, not to.
All right, sounds like we're real close to, to a resolution. Councilman Paul?
Continuing with trash. That, I don't know if we've done it, but can we go ahead and put out some guidelines for this yard debris? We, we need to do something with Richard Dust or somebody else's, people don't know what they can and can't put out there. Okay? So we need to be proactive, and let's let people know what will be picked up and what won't. Golf carts, my favorite thing. Pete, if we can instruct the chief and the police, if they stop somebody, give them a ticket, or give their parents a ticket. I've had it with warnings. They go by my house all the time, ten years old, twelve years old, driving like they're crazy. I heard it, golf went right past a policeman who was sitting there. Nothing was done. Whether it happened or not, I don't know. The citizen told me that. But, you know, if you focus on it and you make a party, then it, then it's going to happen, okay? And the last thing, and I hate to get into it with newspapers, and Eve is here. Eve doesn't write headlines, and she doesn't write editorials. But I did read the editorial, and I don't want to make it go back and forth, but I found it curious, you know, that the editorial was about the county and the city working together. And I don't know who writes it, maybe it's the editor, but he doesn't come to our meetings. So I don't know where his information comes, other than he goes to the county meetings and hears what's said. But, you know, if standing up for city residents against things that we feel are not being done properly by the county, like tax inequities, or like they won't come into the city because it's in the city, and they don't consider that part of the county, I'm not going to shut up about it. And editors of the Gazette or whoever want to say that's not getting along, so be it. But we weren't elected to just go along and get along with the county and do whatever they say. And disagreeing with the county, I'm sorry, that's part of it. It'd be great for everybody to work together, but it takes a back and forth, you know? And, and when I hear things about, well, what does downtown development do for the county? That's a little bit strange, other than it's in the county, you know? And when they ask the question about roads, is it in the county or is it in the city? News alert, every road is in the county. So don't ask me which, where, where it is, you know? And because they only want to maintain roads in the county and not in the city, will we all pay for that? I've been down that, you know? I picked up the mound where Joe Lewis let off, you know, stopped off. He hollered for years about it. And if that's not getting along, so be it, Gazette, I'm sorry. But we're not going to shut up when we think things are not happening for the benefit of the residents of the city of Tipton.
Who are also residents of Tipton County.
Last time I looked, residents of Tipton County, my county taxes are more than what my city taxes are. And any new business brought downtown, more taxes go to the county than go to the city.
You might want to remind everybody that every city resident also has a county commissioner that represents them on the county.
Absolutely. Everyone has. So I'd love to see the editorial writers, whoever did it, come to a city council meeting and listen to what happens on the other side. And I know that's not Eve, because she doesn't write editorials.
That's correct.
I'm off my soapbox.
Okay. Thank you. Now, follow up to that, Wes.
You know, after, you know, going last, everybody kind of already hits all your talking points. I think Jack hit it, you know, hit home run right there. I kind of agree with what he's saying. So, you know, my comments are going to be short and sweet. I agree with what everybody has said on here. I'm interested to know how the Solid Ways Committee comes back and what they recommend. I'm interested in hearing about your conversations with Mr. Golden. And then, Jack, everything you said, I a hundred and ten percent support, so.
Thank you. All right. Well, I'll wrap things up, and then we will adjourn. Two things I want to remind everyone about. Tomorrow afternoon, four o'clock. I'm sorry, were you going to say something?
I got a question, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Do you want to ask your question first?
Yeah, last time I filmed you, you know, you're having a meeting about the landfill and about, you know, some of the laws and some of the things. Did you all get any action or traction on that, as the county agreed to sit down with you all on that? And is there going to be a public meeting on that?
Pete, do you want to answer that?
Not, yeah, go ahead.
You'll pretty well put it out there, and that's why I wanted to ask you about it. Because I've had a lot of people say, are they going to be, are they going to be, or they're not going to be? It needs to be resolved, and that's what I'm hearing, but I'll maybe hear something different.
Okay, thank you, yes, sir, I will. There's been a lot of work done at the landfill. The landfill is stable since our last conversation. With regards to the meeting, there's been some correspondence back and forth, but to answer the question, we have not met, nor has been any conclusion as to when we will meet. So I did send an update today to the county manager, informing them of, you know, where we are, what we're spending, some pictures, updates, just to make sure that they know what, what's going on at the landfill. So hopefully, we could learn something soon. Uh, I've asked for a, a follow-up meeting, uh, so we could talk about specifics, uh, and we don't want to get in a dangerous situation. Uh, landfill is a very, very technical and very expensive business, uh, venture, and you have to do it right. Uh, so I, I, I say all that, that we have some discussions, and we need to have detailed conversations about what's next, and we cannot wait very much longer, so, uh, I'll keep you posted.
So, there wouldn't be a date at this point, say, John, ten, fifteen days, I don't mind, you, you can't...
We're, we're not, we don't have a specific date at this point in time.
Okay, and that's all I got.
Yeah.
Thank you for being kind.
Okay, you're very welcome. Um, I want to remind everyone that tomorrow afternoon, Tuesday afternoon at four o'clock, UGA will kick off their hundredth anniversary celebration, so if you are able to come and join, uh, there's gonna be a, a big party on the circle at the UGA campus, so that starts at four o'clock tomorrow, so, uh, so come join for that. And then something that I'm particularly very proud about, um, Pete shared this with me this afternoon, this is, uh, I'll hold this up for you, how you were to sit in, and, um, swing around to the council and say, this is a, an aerial photo of Fullwood Park. And if you'll notice, there is a, kind of a pinkish-purple line that goes around, this